It is six thirty. Um, roll call please.
Brian Geezy.
Present.
Doug Houston.
Absent.
Brian Mohan absent. Pat Reschowski present. Cody Podolski.
Present.
Very good, those that are able. Thanks. And. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And at this time, uh, virtue card reading, please.
Yeah. Humility. Being humble is considering others as important as yourself. You are thoughtful of their needs and willing to be of service. You don't expect others to be perfect, or you don't expect others or yourself to be perfect. You learn from your mistakes. When you do great things, humility reminds you to be thankful instead of boastful. You are practicing humility when you consider the needs of others as important as your own. Apologize and make amends when you hurt others. Learn from your mistakes and change for the better. Ask for help when you need it. Are doing your, are doing your best just to do it, not to impress anyone. Are grateful instead of boastful. Affirmation. I am humble. I do not judge others or myself. I value my ability to keep growing and learning. Humility.
Thank you. Um, our school board of education guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members being respected at all times. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. At this time, I'd like to entertain any public comments this evening. Quiet crowd, quiet crowd. Uh, we'll move on then, um, into showcasing schools and student learning. We have CWSA update. Mr. Richard Green, it's good to see your smiling face here this evening.
Good to be here. Been a while.
It has.
We met yesterday as a, as a governance council. Uh, we've had a couple of governance committee meetings between our past, one month past governance meeting. And, um, we'll be bringing more to the board as we go forward about some of those meetings. The things that we're, we're doing right now as a governance council are beginning the review of our contract with, with the district. And that's due, I think, our new contract would be January of two thousand and ten. So we're trying to get prepared for that. Since we've had a little bit of turnover in, in our board and with Mr. Remington Black taking over as CEO, he doesn't like that title, but.
Nope.
We'll find, we'll find a different title that he likes better. Um, we're, we're adjusting to each other and trying to understand our, our roles again, uh, which is a good thing to do from time to time. So, so this is, this is important. We are also reviewing the RACI chart that Wendy Green put together for us and trying to make sure that that's aligned with our, our roles and responsibilities within the governance council and its committees. So we're, we're doing a lot of self-examination right now, which is, is very valuable. In addition, um, we've had some, um, staff development taking place this summer. Chris Goodwin has attended Project Lead the Way training and also environmental education training. So he's spent about two weeks, I guess, in, in development time, which will be very good. That will help him to be more successful in, in working with our students. I heard yesterday that we have twenty-seven enrolled as of this point. So we'll need to talk again about numbers. It seems to happen every year.
Yeah.
And how are we going to address numbers? But, uh, that's all I got today. Do you have any questions for me?
I wouldn't know our board. No, but I, I know, I appreciate your time in attending our meetings and I need to reciprocate. And I know that I owe you some time, some questions and some discussions.
We need your time.
Yeah.
We always appreciate your input.
Yep.
You, you provide a perspective that, that we need in our deliberations on many things. When there's something important that comes up, um, I know that Amy or someone else in the board will be sure to let you know that we really need you there. Okay?
Well, I enjoy meeting those meetings. Yeah. Monday nights are the hardest for some reason. I don't know why, but we'll get there. But thank you very much for your report today.
Okay. So one, one question, Richard. The council had been talking about doing some type of a, an advance in the fall. Was there any further discussion about that so that we can get that on the board members' calendars if?
We didn't. We did not do any more discussion. What we basically decided last month was that, um, the beginning of the school year sometime in September, we thought would be the best time.
Okay.
So that we could get, uh, new parents involved.
Go ahead.
And the advance for the.
Thank you.
For, for us. Uh, as soon as we know more about the plan for that.
We get the board.
Certainly communicate that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry we can't give you more notice for, for running slower.
No worries.
Lot of changes, so please expect it to be effective. Thank you very much, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Brian Grill.
Um, just getting some of my work done and getting prepared for the upcoming school year, but one of the big updates I want to let, you know, we did hear back about the school safety grant. Um, we just had one real adjustment to make because we had a letter of support from the Nacusa Police Department, but I also need to get a letter of support from the Wood County Sheriff's Department. So I worked with Josh Colow. We have that letter in and we restimited, so we should be finding out any day about whether we qualify or not. But everything in the rest of the email was very positive. Everything was there, so I do not foresee there being any challenges. It was just that one additional letter they needed.
That's great news.
So, yep. So hopefully next month I will know that we got it. That's hope.
Fantastic, fantastic. And I would, we are, we are very fortunate tonight. I'd like to make the introduction of Ms. Marissa Harnish. Um, Marissa is going to be, um, be our student representative for the following year. And what I would like to do, Nick, if you would, Nick is, I would like to recognize Nick is serving in this role for the past year and two months. Well, year and a month.
Yep.
Year and a month. And all of the, you know, I want to thank you for the time that you've brought and the information you've brought to the board. You've been an asset to the board and your communication has been very, very helpful and informative.
Thank you very much as well.
So I want to, let's, let's have you introduce Ms. Ms. Harnish tonight and, uh, yeah.
So, uh, as Mr. Geezy said, Marissa will be taking over. I'm assuming same type of protocol. Nothing's changed student council side, so she's the student council president next year.
Mm-hmm. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Marissa, do you have anything that you'd like to say or, you know, questions? One thing we want you to do is be entirely humble here and, you know, don't be afraid to, you know, to speak your, to speak your voice.
Okay, yeah. I'm just excited for this year and all the opportunities given and stuff, so I'm looking forward to it.
So what is, good. So what has Nick shared about the experience that has you most excited?
Um, I'm probably more excited about being like up to date on everything and just knowing what's going to happen and what the future has in the, like, storms.
We look forward to having you with us for the next twelve months.
Yeah, thanks, me too.
Fantastic.
Your senior year.
My junior year.
Oh, junior year.
Could happen for twenty-two.
Yes.
Did you already get, did you already get your name on one of the little?
I did.
Oh.
Mrs. Martin, thank you.
You gotta hold it up. When you hold it up and show me, I wanna see it. There we go. Thank you. Give Marissa a round of applause.
And, uh.
Okay. As we move on here, um, one of the results policies that we reviewed last month was R1, which is overarching results. Over, overarching results is a, is a kind of a blanket statement. Terry, would you be able to just read that for me?
Nacusa School District develops students who excel academically, act responsibly, display good character and citizenship, and reason and solve problems rationally. We focus on preparing our students with the skills they will need in today's global community.
And one thing that we're going to be doing on a monthly basis is talking about items that support, that goes overarching results. And one of the minerals we're going to look at tonight is the number of students that were involved with dual credit courses with Mid State Franklin College. Um, we had seventy-four Nacusa students enrolled in dual credit courses in the seventeen, eighteen school year. Nacusa students earned two hundred and eleven college credits. This is an increase of eighteen credits from the previous years. That number represents, you know, the, the, the number of classes that our students were able to take while enrolled in high school. These students saved thirty thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Sizeable amount of money that parents or students will not have to pay for tuition based on the fact they could take those dual credit. And a good reflection, um, you know, the overarching results that we're looking for as a district. And each month we'll highlight something different. Any questions or comments on them? Go ahead. The next item on the agenda, um, strategic plan review and supporting documents and areas of focus. One thing that I just, I wanna just note here is that we as a board need to do some more work in reviewing this before we, we jump right into it. Um, we're not going to, we're going to be forwarding some of that to the August meeting, but Terry does have some information that he'd like to share. Uh, but we do want to go more in depth and, and look at things a little bit differently in August if you got the correct.
Yep.
Correct statement.
Thank you. So what you have in this little packet is our district strategic plan. You want to pass one down? So the, the front is the strategic plan that we've been working on. This really looks the same as what we were focused on last year. One of the things we've heard over and over and over from our staff is let us focus, let us get good at things, and stop jumping around and going down different rabbit trails, right? So we're staying focused here. So this strategic plan is what drove all of our conversations last year when we went out and heard from our public and our staff around what they see happening that's going well and the challenges. So what we did then in that second page is we created this document that really talks about.
No, no, no. There's, did we have the second page?
Well, we created a document that, uh, there's a document that we created that looked at what people shared with us around strengths and challenges. And then what we did is we analyzed, we've been analyzing our, our test results, how kids are doing with behaviors, um, how our staff are doing with working through the new processes like the workshop model, uh, some of the socio-emotional learning frameworks. Uh, and then what we did then is we made some recommendations for really supporting and helping this strategic plan take shape in the upcoming year. So what you have in front of you then, in that little handout, are the three building, uh, it's the, it's the work of the three buildings individually that when they went to sale back in June, they had spent a lot of time analyzing the work that they're doing in the buildings in relation to the strategic plan. And then what we're going to do now, when you look at this, it looks a bit foreign probably, right? Because this is their language. And what we're going to do now is we're going to take each building and really focus this language around, language that, you know, people can understand that are perhaps outside the educational realm, right? So, and then our goal is to take those documents back out and share those with our stakeholders. So when we are done, we are going to come full circle. So we, we have the strategic plan focus areas, right? We, we've been studying data. We've been looking at data. We've been talking to people. And now we've got, what we're, we're saying is, okay, so if you look at the little icons on here, they match up, right? And then we are going to be able to go back and show people in each building plan where their concerns or their, their challenges that they brought forward match up with the work that we're doing as a district. All right? So next month, we're going to be honing in and really looking at language in each plan that we're going to be able to share with parents. So what questions do you have? It's a bit different than, uh, that the big cumbersome bulky strategic plan that we perhaps had in the past. This has been a, a strategic plan that's been alive and in front of us, you know, many of us on a regular basis.
I don't have any questions. I think it's, I think it's good that you guys are taking the staff in because it's, you know, they're the ones that are putting in the work to help these children and stuff. You know, kudos to implementing that into the strategic plan and stuff. I like that.
You know, I need to thank all those individuals that were part of that process in December and January of last year, those tedious meetings. They weren't tedious, they were kind of fun. But we got some really, real good feedback, not only from the public, but from our individual meetings within the buildings that, you know, Cody, as you say, for us to, to listen to that information and then for the administration then to put that in action or something, I need to, you know. That's closing. Is that what that little icon of top means? No, it's a top section. We're good. But yeah, we, we as a board need to go in a little bit more in depth and, and again, thank you, Terry, and your, your, your admin team for that, that work that's been done. They took a lot away from that training and, but that's the old training and, and.
So I did, just to give you an idea, so what we did is we, we looked at input. So we had gathered input from our process work that we're working on, some learning plans in the buildings. We listened to people, um, around both the hot, or all three of the, the areas of focus. Uh, and then staff surveys were included in that, student surveys, parent surveys. Uh, so all of that information has been funneled into, and as the, the building teams were at sale, they were looking at surveys, they were looking at adult learning frameworks, they were looking at student data. And then really what we're seeing then is the result of that work in these, uh, focus areas at the building. But what's hard is to really understand this in, in language that we all can understand. So we'll dig in and our hope is that we'll get that information out to you, you know, within a, a timely manner so that you have a chance to develop some questions. And maybe, Cody, after you shared what you shared, maybe we should have some of the building teams actually, you know, maybe we have not just principals here, but.
Yeah.
Some staff members that have been involved.
Yeah, I think that would be key, so.
Good. Any other questions on that?
Thank you, Terry. Any questions then? Okay. Um, our next item on the agenda is approval of annual notices. Um, we're required to approve these notices on an annual basis. Um, I'm just going to list them. Notice of academic standards forward slash educational options. That being the first, most recent accountability report being the second. Educational options being the third, and the special needs scholarship program being the fourth. These are required notices and at this time, um, I'm looking for a motion to approve these notices.
So move. A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Moving on, seclusion and restraint. Um, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Brian Grill.
All right. Um, this is a, the annual report that I have to give to the board to let you know about our practices around seclusion and restraint in the Nacusa School District. So under Act one twenty-five, the components of the law basically say we have to have trained staff if we as a school district are going to use physical restraint as a practice within our school district. And as part of the law, it also provides guidelines of how it should be used, how it should be documented and communicated if families want to use, how we outline it within the IEP process, but also to when we do use either physical restraint or seclusion, there are requirements on our end to collect the data, report out to the dad, so the community and the board knows when and how often we are using it. Um, so the data I need to collect that I am sharing with you tonight is the number of incidences of both seclusion and restraint, and that is segregated into the fact of students with disabilities and students without disabilities. And this just needs to be provided to you annually by September one. But as you see, our numbers from thirteen fourteen to this year, seventeen eighteen, have dropped drastically. So we had one incident of seclusion this year and seventeen, um, uses of physical restraint. And to the encouraging news too, because with the non-violent crisis intervention training, I really emphasize in the training that it should only be used when a student is a harm to themselves or others. And you only do it until you can get the student to a safe place where you do not have to maintain that for long periods of time. So even the number of incidents is why I have to report, but as part of the actual report they fill out for me, they break it down to how many minutes is the student being restrained? And in most cases, it's happening for two minutes or less. Staff are really understanding that we need to move students to safe places. It's not in the best interest of the student or best practice to hold them in those positions for multiple minutes at a time. So that's also encouraging as well. Um, then in looking at though, it is still primarily used for our students with disabilities. So those seventeen incidences and one seclusion incident were, it was comprised of nine students with disabilities and one without. Um, but I'm looking at the data and our proactive strategies and things we need to work on, we are still providing, this year we provided a presentation on the definition of seclusion restraint, because the one thing I'm still noticing is some staff are still fuzzy about, okay, you know, because the training for non-violent crisis intervention training, so they have different levels. And some of them, you're not actually restraining, you're actually being supported for the student. So helping define, when does it count as restraint, when does it not? And then also to define, defining for staff, because a lot of individuals think seclusion is when those schools have the tiny rooms within a room and that was seclusion. Well, those don't exist anymore, which is a very good thing for students. But when I have helped define, well, then when does seclusion occur or when does it count? Because there are times staff are like, well, does this count? Does this count? And I've really tried to do the front end work of defining that for them, but also through the training, defining what steps can be taken before that occurs. So we're not using those practices. And as you can see, our numbers, they are going down. Um, too, we had a training last year on functional behavioral assessments and behavior intervention plans. I can say for students with disabilities where this may be a practice, it is outlined that student does have a functional behavioral assessment and a behavior intervention plan, which is something sometimes in the past we didn't always have, but now we currently have that in place for all students. And as you know too, I'm doing a lot of work around building multi-tiered systems of support. And that's also part of the process, making sure we have strong universal practices so we don't have to rely on these practices. These are very reactive practices and I'll say too, do I ever foresee this number going down to zero? Unfortunately, there are times students that are a harm to themselves or others and these have to be used, but it's encouraging to see that we're getting less and less of those situations because we're intervening early. So that's the exciting news.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
The number did perhaps, you know, go down quite drastically and I, you know, I think, you know, I would, I would agree that it's probably a result of those techniques that you're using prior to, you know, getting to that restraint. But when it has to happen, it has to happen and it's, you know. Well, thank you very much for your work on that, Mr. Grill. And, uh, we very much appreciate your communication and attention to this matter. Next on our agenda, um, the, there are a number of documents that are provided to the board for informational purposes. These documents are going to be distributed to our parents prior to the beginning of the next school year. Um, these documents, as with most documents, are living documents and they are subject to change. The documents that we are, are being presented to the board include the NIH Student and Parent Handbook, the NHS Code Curricular Activities Code, Nacusa Academy Student Handbook, the WISE Academy Virtual Learning Handbook, the AMS Forward slash CWSA Student Handbook, and Nacusa Youth Athletics Code Curricular Code, EMS Behavioral Plan, Crisis Action Plan, and the Hocky Elementary Parent Handbook. Read through these, again, a great deal of work. Any questions on any of these?
Can I give you guys just a quick legal update? Because the Crisis Action Plan is not typically one we bring to the board.
Very good.
But there are some legal updates coming your way as a board that I just want to make you aware of. So why this is coming your way?
Very good.
Okay. Um, so in the event of a lot of school tragedies that have happened over the last year, there have been some Wisconsin state statutes that have changed that have resulted in us needing to bring this school crisis plan forward to you. So, um, in Wisconsin state statute, now our crisis plan, before they're like, it's good practice to have one in place. But now they're outlining exactly what schools need to have in every single crisis plan. So up here you will see, we have to have ones for school violence and attacks, threats of school violence, bomb threats, fire, I'll list them off as this catches up, um, weather related emergencies, intruders, parent steward re-unification, and then threats to non-classroom events such as concerts, athletic events, and other extracurricular events. The nice thing is, when I did the annual review with some of the community members, we do have a lot of things in place. The biggest things that we needed to work on and we had good discussion around and you saw updates in the crisis plan was around having those procedures for our athletic events and concerts. Mr. Nick Nipbreth actually helped with some of the weather-related emergencies for our football games and different outside events. So those are there, but we at that annual meeting kind of talked about what are we doing in the event of school violence at those events? So that's now be required, a required component, because before schools, you planned for the school day, but now they're saying you have to think about those extracurricular events as well. And the reason the. And the reason the plan is coming to you, under this law too, so the actual crisis plan needs to come to you for board approval once every three years. We still do our annual updates, but you will have to approve the actual plan saying that it is in line with state statute. So by January of this year, I'm gonna make additional updates because we just have to tweak a few things. But I'll be coming to you in December for actual board approval of the crisis plan. Um, part of that as well, there has to be annual drills where we have to practice our actual school violence situations. I'm working with Josh Colo, our school resource officer, and before it was, okay, we practice it. But now there's actually gonna have to be a report that comes to you guys saying, this is how it went, this is what it looked like. So that will also be part of the packet in, in December. Um, as well, we were gonna have to document with Alice Training. We're gonna have to document what staff took the training, when they trained, and how often they're getting trained. That's gonna be part of the process now as well. Um, and then Josh and I, along with, I just invited Steve Hersberg, our Buildings and Grounds Director, to go to a training because we have to conduct a school safety assessment of our athletic facilities, our school buildings, and things to say, where are our buildings adequate in school safety and where are they lacking? So there's an actual assessment put out there by the Wisconsin Council for School Safety Directors. And that's who's planning, you know, will be going at the end of August to get that certification.
Is that part of the school safety grant too, or just the state statute?
This is all part of the state statute. And a lot of the requirements to apply for the grant makes schools now in line with state statute. Yep. So that's why I just want, because typically you've never gotten the crisis plan, but that's why you're gonna start seeing it more, is because I need board approval on it.
I do believe that we had on the, on the board monitoring calendar on one of the operational expectations, we have that document.
I think it is in there. But I don't know that it aligns with that.
We should try, we may need to realign the board monitoring calendar, just.
I documented that as well.
Very good, very good. Because we just wanna make sure that if it, as it is required, that we get it on the calendar and then we.
So that way we don't have to do it two separate months, that they all align. Okay.
Thank you very much for that update.
No problem.
Thank you. And the other documents that we discussed, um, that are mentioned here.
And if you have questions, please ask.
Yep.
So it's good to look, have people looking at them.
They're living documents and we, we, you know, those are things that like, if we do have concerns or questions, we'll bring that to the administration. Attention. Very good. Um, and now we are moving on to policy governance. And the first one here is E four slash SR one Governance Management Connection. Um, this one states, the policy statement of interpretation is that, I interpret this to mean that the school, school board's sole official connection to the operational organization, its achievement and its conduct will be through the district administrator. Um, essentially, the board is conveying that responsibility onto the district administrator. That's a big responsibility to.
I can handle it. I've, um, I got a good team.
Right, and we do, um, all board members were, were notified of this. There wasn't, there was not any response with regards to any potential violations. Any discussion? No discussion. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve D four slash SR one Policy Governance as presented and verified by the. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Um, BSR two, uh, Unit of Control. Terry, would you please read the interpretation?
Absolutely. So the interpret, interpretation of this policy is that the board works with the district administrator as a whole, not as individuals or subgroups. Do you want me to go further?
Yes.
So specifically, um, unless, or accordingly, unless specifically authorized and delegated by the board at a public meeting, individual board members or subgroups of board members have no authority to give instructions or otherwise direct the district administrator in the management or the operations of the district. And any such decisions or direction will not be binding on the district administrator. Any such board authorization to an individual or subgroup of the board will be given only in rare and extreme circumstances. Board member or board committee requests for information or assistance unless authorized by the board as an entity may be rejected by the district administrator if, in his or her judgment, complying will require a material commitment of staff time and/or resources is unreasonable or is disruptive to district operations. Such requests may be referred to the whole board for authorization.
Thank you. Um, again, this, uh, we did not receive any responses regarding any non-conformities. At this point, motion, a floor, to approve BSR two as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Um, OE two, Emergency District Administrator Succession. Um, this policy has been recently updated. What it is, is a succession plan that, that the district administrator is unable to perform his duties. Updated.
Yep.
Yep, updated. At this point, again, there have been no findings of non-conformance. I will call for a motion to approve OE two, Emergency District Administrator Succession Monitoring Report as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. OE four, um, interpretation, please carry.
Sure. Um, what we have here is the district administrator shall assure the recruitment, employment, development, and evaluation, uh, excuse me, the development, cop, evaluation and compensation of district employees in a manner necessary to enable the district to achieve its results policies. So, in a nutshell, these are the things that, um, that this, uh, this report, this result, this policy covers. So the district administrator will conduct thorough background inquiries and checks prior to hiring any paid personnel. Will conduct reasonable background inquiries and checks prior to utilizing the services of any volunteers who have unsupervised contact with students. Will select candidates who are both highly qualified and best suited for all positions. Will administer clear personnel rules and procedures for employees. Will effectively handle complaints and concerns. Will maintain adequate job descriptions for all staff positions. Will protect confidential information. Will develop competitive compensation and benefit plans to attract and retain, retain the highest quality employees. Will, uh, consistent with the district administrator's own evaluation, will evaluate all employee performance according to their contribution toward achieving the board's results policies and their compliance with the board's operational expectations policies. The district administrator will ensure that the evaluation of all instructional and administrative personnel is designed to, uh, work towards those result policies. Ensure that all staff members are qualified and trained to perform the responsibilities assigned to them. Will maintain a district culture or defined autonomy aligned with the board's results policies that positively impacts the ability of staff to reasonably perform their jobs and allows them to work in an environment of professional support and courtesy. And then also, the district administrator will assure that, uh, we have open, responsive, and welcoming environments. That sounds like a full-time job right there in that one policy.
You're hired.
Huh?
You're hired. Um, a lot of, a lot of good things there, um, a lot of strengths.
Well, and I guess a highlight too is, you know, the work that the board and, and the admin team did on looking at the compensation uh, over this last year, that, that's been a big part of it. And again, we continue to look at, you know, retaining, attracting and retaining the highest quality staff that we can get. I will, I do wanna highlight though, um, so just listen to the number of applicants we had for these positions. So our speech and language pathologist, one applicant. High school English, three applicants. Middle school math, five applicants. Band director, ten applicants. Kindergarten teacher, eight. Fifth grade, eight. High school math, seven. Technology and engineering teacher, eight. When I first started back in two thousand twelve, we'd end up, we'd have fifty, sixty, you know, applicants for some of these elementary positions, I remember. So it's interesting.
And this isn't just in Nacusa, this is a trend that's, you know, throughout the state. And, you know, it, it's.
But we are fully staffed and I'm quite pleased to say we've got a, a great team joining us.
Good. Thank you very much, Terry. Um.
Any questions on that? On any of the, because there's a lot there.
There are a lot there, but I, I think you did a good job. And again, as with the others, we didn't have any findings of, any findings of non-conformances. With that being said, I'd like to call for a motion to approve OE four Personal Administration Monitoring Report as presented and verified by the board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Can I just ask the question, do we wanna record anything as far as strengths or challenges on that?
I think I'd like to work on it next Thursday's meeting or at some point.
Okay.
There's so many to review.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's a, that discussion would take some time.
Okay.
And, you know, just, just to kinda, we did not have our Thursday meeting last week. And our Thursday meeting is when we typically would cover these items in much more detail at length um, and documents of mistakes, weaknesses, but due to scheduling issues, we were not able to meet. And, you know, we're not doing it justice at this time, if anything, catch up next week.
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Uh, Board Purpose, GP one.
Want me to read that?
Yes.
The Board of Education of the School District of Nacusa represents, leads, and serves the district's owners and holds itself accountable to them by committing to act in their best interests and by ensuring that all board and organizational action is consistent with law and the board's policies. The board's purpose is to assure that the organization achieves the results described in the board's results policies and that it operates according to the values expressed in the board's operational expectations. Uh, in the fulfillment of this charge, the board is committed to rigorous and continual improvement of its capacity to govern effectively, using its policies to divine its, to define its values and expectations.
Thank you, Terry. If I could just borrow that for a moment, please.
Sure.
Um, this is, this is what we're charged, this is what we're charged with by our stakeholders, those individuals that elected us to serve in these capacities. And, you know, our responsibility is to, um, have, you know, hold that comp, that accountability to the system. I would like to thank the, the school board, um, for the work that was, that was done over the last several months in the review, um, of our district administration, Terry Whitmore. Um, we held a number of, of, of co-exception meetings to discuss, you know, where we are as a district and where we're gonna be going in the future. And, uh, since our last monthly board meeting, we completed, we did complete, uh, the review for Terry. Um, I'm very pleased to say that, uh, that, you know, we feel we found Terry. We want, we feel Terry is in a, uh, you know, he's with the right district at the right time and that we feel that Terry can move us in the right direction in the future. As with all reviews, there's always, always areas for improvement. Um, many areas of restraint, some areas of improvement. I would like to provide that as an artifact for, you know, how we as a board, um, that's one of the things that we have. Um, that, you know, what we have done in our purpose to ensure accountability throughout the district. And again, I wanna reiterate that that, through that review process, we as a board as a whole, find that Terry is in the right spot at the right time to, to lead our district where we think it needs to go. Um, and, uh, thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
And again, thank you to all board members. Any comments, gentlemen?
Boom, yeah. I just, like I say, I, you know, Terry, since he first got this position before I was on the board and he is one person that, uh, I feel truly cares about what goes on here. Um, sometimes, you know, he, and I told him this in, in respect. He, he reacts a little, sometimes he goes a little too quick. He doesn't think things through as much as me, but he slowed down. He actually took it to heart. You know, he slowed down, he took it to heart and, uh, but he is, I, I always felt he was a man of action, not someone who just gives you, oh, yeah, yeah, I'll take care of it. And then, you know, three, four months later, you're looking at the same thing and you knew nothing happened. That's, I mean, I've been in his office, you know, just like I say, saying I need something, we could get on the phone right there and fix it. You know, so, that's, that's, that's my perspective of him. Um, and I know people are gonna agree or disagree with me, that's your prerogative, I, you know, I get it. But that's how I feel about it.
And, you know, we as, we as elected members, um, by, by our stakeholders, we take this responsibility very seriously, you know, always. Um, at this point, I'd like to call for a motion to approve GP dash one Board Purpose as presented and verified by the board.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, thank you. Consent agenda, um. Anybody wanna speak on the resignations?
Captain C. Hamilton was one of our high school educational assistants for a student who required one-on-one assistance. She was wonderful. She was brand new to the educational field. Um, the only reason she resigned was because her fiance took a job in the medicine area. So she's moving with her fiance, so, but very good and did a wonderful job for us, so.
Thank her for that. And with, like as Terry said, with regard to employment, all the positions have been filled. We're approaching our, our coming school year with, with the staff that's gonna be ready to address the needs that, that we have.
Well, does any, any of our administrators wanna say just kind of an overarching statement without going into detail?
Too much, I mean, I'm very excited with, uh, you see, there's a fairly lengthy list in AMS and you could also take, like, for example, our band director from NHS, and we certainly worked with them. But we've got a number of people who are very excited and able to go and very capable to and being able to work with students and, you know, build strong relationships with them and be able to help them grow. I'm just excited to work alongside them and welcome them to the family.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
And we do welcome all, all of our hires for our district. Thank you very much.
And I just wanna highlight, yes.
And I just want to highlight, Maria is coming back for the speech and language pathologist. So she has some personal things going on that she needed to resign. But when I met with her and talked with her, she's like, I'm coming home. I'm feeling like this is the right place for me. Things are going well for her, so she's excited to be back, so.
And that was a loss when we lost her. So we are very excited to have her back.
Yes.
She's a difference maker. Absolutely.
Cody, would you mind going over the donations?
Sure. We got a chess table donated to A M S from Logan Hilders, a backpack for kids, a hundred and forty dollars from Sacred Heart, five hundred from Hippo, one ten from Bethlehem Lutheran, seventy-two, seventy-five from A M S Jeans for Teens fundraiser, and two hundred and six bucks from United Weekend.
Thank you very much, Cody. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Future meetings for slash agenda items. Our next meeting will be August sixteenth. This is going to be a, this meeting may take some time. It's not going to be just an hour. Lex Love, Brian, Mahan know that.
I'll send them a personal note.
Yeah. We are going to be bringing forward some of the items from the strategic plan. Operational Expectations, O E nine, communicating with the board. O E five, learning environment for sports slash treatment of students. And Governance Policy, G P eight, Board Member's Code of Conduct. In addition, we'll be approving employee conduct and having a wellness policy update. Any other items that we are, that we need to look for in the next meeting?
Well, one thing that we do need to consider, and we really have been doing policy governance now for a while, and we really haven't gotten into having conversations around this ownership linkages. So we, last year, we did strategic planning. We went out and met with stakeholders. But if there are groups of people that we'd like to connect with, whether it be coaches, or senior citizens, or church groups, whoever it might be, we really want to, each quarter, we'd really like to set that up so that we have one opportunity. And it doesn't have to be the whole board. It could be one board member, two board members going out and, you know, inviting church people and, you know, congregations, or coaches, or whatever it might be, so that we can continue to take a look at, you know, strengths and challenges that people see from, you know, different slices of the community.
What is that, is that for next month?
We're just, for next month, essentially, we're going to review those, that ownership linkage, and then try to create quarterly meetings, you know, to reach out.
Okay.
Instead of, you know, waiting and having that communication once a year, say, during the strategic planning review, or otherwise, feel a bit more proactive in trying to reach groups. It might be different communities. You know, I think we need to remember our different stakeholders in the town of Rome, town of Saratoga, town of Ford Edwards. You know, students that are represented here in our district. We have a very large geographic area. And, you know, we'd like to be able to, to be available for them. You know, that's our job. That's what, that's what we're here for.
That's going to be linked, do you call it linkage?
Yeah, they call it linkages. So you're really linking up with owners. So how would you like to proceed with that? Should we just start a Google Doc where people can generate ideas?
To bring to the meeting on the sixteenth? We can start a Google Doc. Bring some ideas. I like that.
So linkage ideas? Good.
Very good. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we've, it's, there was a lot of information that we packed into a short time here. Not all meetings in this harness will be this short. Nick, you can attest to that.
He's shaking it up.
That's already warned you.
Mr. Mahan was here. He'd already jumped on this. But at this point, I'm looking, there's a, I'm looking for a motion on the floor. Motion to adjourn, is that what you're saying?
I am.
Okay, we have first. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Motion, meeting adjourned.